Good evening, I'm gonna call to order this work session. It is six forty-seven PM and it's November twenty-third. And we're gonna start off with Public Works, so I'm gonna turn it over to Public Works Director Kristin Nasher. Thank you.
Yep, thank you Councilmember Supple, and thank you for your attention tonight. Tonight, Mike Peterson is our Assistance Utility Superintendent. He's gonna go over our Utilities Risk and Resiliency Plan. It's a work in progress and it will always be kind of a working plan. And you'll see why we're gonna kinda get a little deep into it because it's a very, very technical thing. So even at this high level that Mike's gonna present is still kinda technical. And but I think it's important that you see where we're at with our critical underground infrastructure and how we're shaping the plan to keep that resilient into the future. Also, this was not, this has been one of my top priorities since I became a director and also it's been a council goal for about the same amount of time. And so I think this is an update of where we've been. I think at a couple times I've mentioned we're working on it and we're doing desktop analysis. So you'll get to see what I've been alluding to, all those times that I've mentioned it. So I think this is really the first time this has been in front of the council. So ask questions as we go along. And I think you'll see that Mike's passionate about asset management, which is great. And he's also passionate about Richfield too, so that's good too, he grew up here. Anyway, with that, I'll let Mike start.
Alright, thank you. So yeah, like Kristin said, this, we've been working on this for quite a while. And we've actually, like, we've started implementing things from this immediately, but we've continued to refine our plan and continue to develop that plan. And again, this, like Kristin said, this is a very technical topic because this is a data-driven approach. And the reason behind that is because we wanna be able to target where we're going and use our funding and our assets to best manage our utility system. Before I get started, I wanted to do just a quick shout out to our GIS Coordinator, Jason Santana. Since he's come on board with Richfield, we have advanced our capability for data management and GIS capability through the roof. And it's really made possible developing this plan a lot easier and developing the tools to maintain this plan a lot easier. So Jason, if you ever get a chance to meet him, he's a behind-the-scenes guy. He's very high-energy, but he's outstanding, so. So I wanted to start off just a little bit about the why, why we need to do this. So obviously ensuring a long-lasting infrastructure. We wanna make sure that we're investing now to maintain the infrastructure now and into the future. And I like using that word "investment" because we're not just pumping a bunch of money into projects. We're investing in that infrastructure that's so important to maintaining the high quality of life in Richfield. And so yeah, maintaining that high level of service. All of our infrastructure is sized and designed for a certain capacity. We wanna make sure we're maintaining that size and capacity and that high level of service. Minimizing disruptions. Anytime a water main breaks, we definitely hear about it, right? The residents are, that's the first time that they're gonna say anything about the utilities is when it's not working. So we wanna make sure to try to minimize those disruptions. And then manage that reinvestment to reduce that ownership, that cost of ownership and risk. And we're gonna dive into risk. That's kinda what our asset management is based on, is that risk analysis. So yeah, the how. So again, we're taking that asset management approach. So we're gonna use the data, we're gonna use the tools we have to develop an approach, a plan, and something that we can, we can again, target specific areas and invest properly to make sure that we're maintaining that high level of service. And like I said, the risk assessment, we're gonna, we were able to do desktop analysis and dive into risk and look at these three, these factors that go into the risk. So probability of failure, consequence of failure, that's our definition of risk in this, in this case. In terms of probability of failure, I'm just gonna touch a little bit on modes of failure. So for any asset of mode of failure, it's usually one of, one of three things. An economical, a physical, or a level of service. And you'll see as we get through some of the slides here, our water and sewer are generally, we're looking at physical modes of failure. Our storm system, on the other hand, is looking more at a level of service. And we'll talk about that a little bit more. We're gonna jump into our water system. And this is, this is where I, I'm gonna showcase some of our tools. And this is the part that I really like because, again, I'm kind of a data nerd, so. This is a dashboard of our water risk model. So unable to make decisions, we need to know what we're dealing with. So we can look at this and we can, we can quickly summarize what our system, what our water system looks like. So we've got distributions here for age, diameter, material, and then just some statistics on the bottom. So just looking right here at the age distribution, our system is old, right? Generally speaking, for an underground pipeline, seventy-five years is your design life. So we're, we're up in the eighty, ninety percent life consumed for our water assets. So that right there tells us that we need to start planning and taking action on this. And so that's why, like I said, as we continue to develop the models and our plan, we started implementing practices right away. And I'll, and I'll talk a little bit about those in a minute. So we can dive deeper into some of the data. We can look and utilize these tools to kinda analyze a little bit more. So all of these Xs here, well, the blue lines are our water mains. And then all the Xs here are points of main breaks. Those are occurrences of main breaks that's happened since the nineteen-seventies to the present. Just looking at this spatially, we can already start to see patterns developing. We can see large clusters up here, we can see clusters here. A pattern, you know, along this road, for some reason, we're getting a lot of breaks. We don't know for sure what's happening, but we have some assumptions based on soils or other things that might be happening. But just looking at this and being able to analyze this spatially is a huge, huge asset. We can go into a little bit further analysis, so we can look at those breaks, a count of breaks, simply a count of breaks by year. So obviously, breaks are starting to increase. There'd be, it makes sense with older assets that our breaks and failures are starting to increase. I think this is an interesting one too, just looking at the breaks by decade and this large jump from the two thousands to the two thousand teens. Again, that's, that's, to me, that's a significant increase in failure rate that, that again, we need to pay attention to. It's a little hard to see on the, on the screen there, but you can kinda see these purple marks. So we were able to actually take those points and analyze them spatially and look at hotspots. So we can, we can calculate and physically quantify hotspot in the city in terms of a cluster of breaks. And again, that leads into calculation of that probability of failure. In terms of consequence of failure, we look at things like what the, what the assets are serving and repair difficulty, like if it's under a major highway. And then we're also looking at the size of the water main. And all of that together, then combined, goes into that risk. And this is kind of a look at what our water risk in terms of a desktop analysis looks like. So the red being higher risk, the dark green being the lower risk. So looking at this, again, this, this tells me a couple of things. One, it's manageable. It's not as bad as what the age shows us. This is something manageable. Seventeen thousand feet of high-risk pipe, it's about three miles or so. That's something we can, we can manage and we can, we can attack right away and see a return on that immediately. We can look at this and we can see areas that we need to be focusing on. Again, this nor, or northwest corner of the city is definitely an area we need to be focusing on. And we've started doing that in terms of some of the programs that we've already implemented. So some of the strategies that we've already started implementing and that we should continue to do is monitoring those high-risk assets using that acoustic testing. So we've been going through and we've actually been, we can physically measure the loss and thickness of the pipe wall using this acoustic testing. And with that, then we can actually, we can start to predict when it's gonna fail or if it needs to be replaced right away. So for example, we did this analysis on the pipelines that ran, on three pipelines that ran under thirty-five W. And we found that all three of them had greater than thirty percent pipe wall loss. So that told us right away that we should probably program those and get those renewed right away. So we're gonna continue to do that. We did this same thing on Sixty-Fifth Street, which led to our decision to line Sixty-Fifth Street prior to the road construction. So yeah, the results of this acoustic testing can help drive then our replacement needs and our replacement schedule. And then we can also start programming right away those high-risk assets into our CIP, which we already have line items for in our CIP currently. But then we can, we can shift those around based on our acoustic testing and make sure that we're replacing the right assets that actually need to be replaced and monitoring the ones that look like they're in, in better condition. Rehab or replacement, so we have two options. So a replacement is just like we do on all of our road reconstruction projects where we dig up the utility and replace it. A rehab would be more like where we're lining that utility. And both of those are really good options and they, they work for different situations. So there again, we can maximize our, our usage of those technologies to our best advantage. Moving to the sewer system, our wastewater system.
So I could ask you a couple things about the
Yeah.
water supplies. So I was curious, I didn't even realize they could be lined, so they're lined in the same way that like a sewer pipe is lined?
That's correct, yeah, it's almost exactly the same process. So typically what they do with the water mains is they'll dig, usually at a valve location, they'll dig into the ground, cut into the pipe, and then they line it exactly like they do a sanitary line.
Okay.
And then they'll replace those valves and, and patch those holes up.
Okay, so given that the system is like pressurized and the, most of the pipes are six inches, it looks like, is there a loss of like pressure or capacity when you line it? Like, does that become thicker and a smaller diameter?
I'm glad you asked that question, that's a really, really good one. So yes, we lose diameter, so you would think you would lose cross-sectional area. However, as a pipe ages, it actually becomes rougher inside and it loses capacity with that, that increase in roughness. By lining the pipe, you actually restore a smooth pipe, which even though it reduces diameter, it can actually increase capacity or maintain the existing capacity.
Okay.
And the benefit too with our water system is that we're, we're very, very adequate with capacity. So again, that level of service for the water system, for at least right now and into the foreseeable future, we don't have a problem with capacity. So lining those six inch, six-inch pipes is likely to be a really good option.
And then the last thing was on a basic level, what, how do you know if there's a break? Like, is, do people just lose water pressure abruptly? Is it like water bubbling out of the street? Like, what happens?
Yeah, usually it's water bubbling out of the street.
Okay.
However, we do proactive leak analysis. Each year, we test the entire system. And we're able to actually find small leaks through that leak analysis that haven't made it up bubbling out of the ground yet.
Cool.
So we do that proactively as well. So yeah, we'll look at the, our wastewater system. So more of the same, we can look at our, our size, our diameter, our material distribution and our age. And again, looking at our age here, our sewer system is older. We know that most of the sewer system was installed back in the nineteen-fifties. So we're, you know, ninety percent plus on some of our assets in this area in terms of age. And again, this, just looking at this triggered us to immediately start a lining project. Knowing that our sewer system was installed back in the fifties and seeing how old everything is. And just generally knowing through institutional knowledge, our maintenance efforts that are needed to maintain our sewer system, we just immediately started implementing a lining project. Now we're just utilizing this to then maximize that lining effort. So this map shows occurrences of roots. Our, our system is mostly clay pipe, vitrified clay pipe. And generally speaking, it's in good structural condition. However, clay pipes are notorious for root intrusions. And we all know, one of the most beautiful things about Richfield is the boulevard trees. But boulevard trees are also, can be pretty harmful to our sewer system because they like to find their way down to that sewer system to, to find water. So we have a lot of root occurrence. And again, we were able to map that and look at it and analyze it. And so we're able to find these pockets of areas that have high concentrations of roots, which means high maintenance efforts, high maintenance costs. And so we can, we can attack those areas and start immediately reducing our maintenance effort in those areas by lining them. And same result for the sewer system, looking at risk. So we're able to see, again, distribution of risks spatially throughout the system. This map I like showing too because this area up in the northeast corner here, this was our first lining project in two thousand and nineteen. So again, utilizing this data, being able to update our system, we're able to track and see where we're making progress. Our, our area that we're doing, that we're, that we're just wrapping up now is right here. So we should, as we update our ASBILTS, update our GIS, we'll be able to see that area turn to green. So again, it helps us track our system, track where our high-risk areas are, and we can pinpoint those areas. So in terms of strategy for our wastewater, we're gonna continue our lining. So we're currently lining about four percent per year, which is about twenty thousand feet or so. That's, that's what we currently have funded in our budget to be able to, to accomplish. And we're making, I think, you know, we're able to make pretty good progress on that. And especially if we're able to target these areas, I think we're gonna, we're gonna see some immediate return on our, on our maintenance costs. And so yeah, tracking those maintenance costs versus rehab costs to make sure that we're getting a positive impact, which I fully believe we will. So moving to storm. So again, like I said at the beginning, our storm system physically isn't as old. It's structurally typically, storm sewer systems can last up to a hundred years. So we're not necessarily, we haven't consumed as much life in our storm sewer system as, as our other two utilities. However, we're gonna see in a minute here how level of service is really driving the need for stormwater. So this is a map of flood inundation areas. So this was produced by our hydraulic model. We did a citywide hydraulic model that was able to quantify where our flood inundation areas occur. And you can definitely see again, some patterns here. We have some areas of the city that have high, high risk for flooding in the two, ten, and hundred-year storm events. And this model is based on the new Atlas fourteen. Again, I'm not gonna go into detail of what that is, but it's the new approach to sizing storm sewers based on current climate conditions and how things have changed and how rainfall intensities have changed. So yeah, this shows that there's, there's some significant impacts here with our storm system for these flood events. And again, being able to analyze this data tells us a lot. So we're able to look into the amount of potential flood-prone structures. So based on this model, about eighteen hundred structures are about ten percent of our city is at risk of inundation and flooding. And then in terms of sizing of our assets, we're about thirty-six percent of it is undersized based on that ten-year design event. So that's definitely something that we need to look at. And then again, getting to our risk. So looking at spatially where our high-risk areas are and where we need to focus some, some attention. But seeing that this is a level of service problem, there's kind of some different steps that we might need to take here. So one, first off, we've, we've been doing a program of inspecting our pipelines and our manholes. And we've actually made a lot of progress on our storm structure manholes in terms of rehabbing those structures. We're almost all the way through the city on those. We've been inspecting pipelines, again, assessing structural condition. And generally speaking, structurally, our system is in decent shape, but it's this level of service that's driving it. So again, for those pipes that don't have a capacity issue, lining can be an, an option for renewal. But in terms of next steps and what we probably should be looking at is that level of service and a flood prioritization. So looking at level of service for the system, you know, a residential area versus like a major arterial, we don't necessarily need to design those storm systems the same. We don't have to make sure that there's zero flooding on a roadway. We just wanna make sure that we're protecting those inundated structures.
So as places like redevelop, like when they put in that strip of Richfield Parkway, do you sometimes increase the size of the stormwater pipes if that's what's needed? Is that kinda what we're trying to do as we do roads?
Absolutely, yeah, we take, yeah, every opportunity redevelopment, we always try to upsize as much as we can, working with those developers especially. And Richfield Parkway is a good example where we can take advantage of that redevelopment to help drive replacing some of that infrastructure. So yeah, flood prior, flood area prioritization. It would be prudent to get, you know, maybe a consultant on board to help us look at some of those flood areas and try to prioritize those areas. And it's an opportunity to maybe look at this through an equity lens as well. Not just looking at, you know, replacing infrastructure, but making sure we're, again, investing our money wisely and equitably and looking at that triple bottom line, excuse me, meaning that environmental, that social, and that physical impact. Oh, sorry, yeah.
I was just curious, so I mean, I'm sure a lot of this is necessary no matter what, but are there other options like rain gardens or like local ways that would decrease the demand on the system? I noticed that Minneapolis on like Grand Avenue and even bordering Richfield, like Colfax Lane, put in a lot of those. And I would assume if they're working correctly that that means less water going down the pipe. Is that something we've looked at or the flooded areas, like the entire area will fill with water and that's hopeless?
So there's a couple of answers to that, I guess. So first off, I think, so all of our redevelopment, we always try to, we always try to make the developers maintain their stormwater on-site. So we encourage stormwater stay on-site and to, and to not increase the amount of runoff that was existing from the, to the new development. In terms of rain gardens specifically, that gets in a little bit trickier because Richfield, with our drinking water source, we have a very large wellhead protection area that we need to be cognizant of. And most of Richfield with this nice sandy soils is in a, is in a high vulnerability area for that wellhead protection. So infiltrating sometimes isn't the best choice for us either because it, it provides a point of potential risk to our drinking water.
Okay.
So it gets a little tricky because, and we try, we've, we've done a lot of things recently with developers where we allow some infiltration and some on-site storage of water. And then others, we have to try to do it regionally with our, our ponds and other things in the system. So there's kind of, it's a balance and it, and it gets, it gets a little tricky. But that's kinda why we wanted, like, we've developed this one-water approach. We need to look at everything and make sure it's all making sense together.
So I'm, I'm curious, like, Richfield Parkway has the median that serves this function. Is that outside of this area where it's too close to a well or?
So it was in the Duisma, but it was in a lower vulnerability area.
Okay.
And again, generally speaking, the groundwater flow kinda flows northwest to southeast.
Okay.
So it was in an area where we felt like it wasn't as vulnerable to the, or as, as risky to the, to the, the drinking water system. So that was a good opportunity to utilize that, that feature.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, to your point though, we did purchase a home once off of Sixty-Sixth Street, and I think it was Knox, right behind the dentist's office there between Penn and the highway, and made that a place for stormwater to collect because it was flooding the areas. And the answer other than that was to reconstruct a whole bunch of roads, you know, and it was more, it was class benefit kinda thing. So we, we, that is a solution, is just to find a place for the wire to go temporarily.
Yeah.
Parks are utilized for that a lot.
I was gonna mention Monroe Park, yeah. Monroe is another good example, prior to Sixty-Sixth Street. We put that box culvert through Monroe Park and then we actually utilized the soccer field that's there now as an overflow area for stormwater. So yeah, we try to do that as much as we can.
And then I was also curious about how this relates to like age of street things. Like, a lot of cities, it seems like they kinda just wait for all of it to get sufficiently bad and then they just rip up everything and assess homeowners a lot. And it's, it's very expensive, but it all comes as one package. So in this case, when we're putting a lot of money into old pipes, do we then just like not touch those if streets need to get reconstructed? Or it sounded like Sixty-Fifth, you do, you are just leaving old pipes despite reconstructing on the surface.
So yeah, that's actually a good, that's a good point. So we, this program should be very well-coordinated with our pavement management program. And that's the plan. And that's another reason that having it in this GIS system, using this data-driven approach is so helpful because our asset, or our pavement management program is in the same system. So now when we do our capital improvement planning, we have all of this stuff mapped and we're able to see all of this stuff all at the same time. And we're able to coordinate those projects properly. And in terms of like Sixty-Fifth, for example, that was more of an economic decision to decide to line that versus actually ripping it up and reconstructing it. That pipeline on Sixty-Fifth, it's a, it's one of our main pipelines that feeds the west side of Richfield. And the downtime for the lining was much less than the downtime for re, the ripping up and reconstructing it, to where it just, it made more sense to line it. But that's, that's, I guess, what, you know, using this, using our, or coordinating with our pavement management program, all of that helps us drive better decisions and kinda come up with customized solutions for each situation.
Okay, and then sorry, last thing about lining, do we, is there like a rule of thumb? Like you mentioned that in general, you expect eighty years or whatever out of water mains and a hundred years out of sanitary. Do we have any idea how long a line pipe lasts or is it like too new of a technology to know for sure?
So at the very least, it restores it to an, an original design life of like, say, seventy-five years. However, from what I'm seeing, since it's, it's changing the material type basically, you, you likely could get more like a hundred years out of it. But at the very least, we're at least restoring it to basically brand-new condition.
Okay, thanks.
So yeah, I wanted to just switch gears a little bit and talk about the water plant. Water plant, of course, is a major asset in our system, so we don't wanna forget about that. The water plant was originally constructed in nineteen sixty-four. There were two major upgrades, one in the nineties and one in the early two thousands. And, and besides that, that's about all that's really been done aside from just general maintenance in the facility. And I will say that our staff is awesome at maintaining that facility. It looks very well for how old it is. But we need to pay attention to it as well. And we, and we need to make sure that we're making smart decisions and that we're programming those into our CIP right now and into the future. So we're currently wrapping up a facility plan where we actually did a condition assessment of all of our assets and all of our structures. And we're using that to kinda lay out a plan for the next ten years. And then we'll, it, it's also establishing a process to be able to allow us to do that assessment every year so we can track condition over time. And then we start to get into actually being able to predict when things might need to be replaced. And then we can, now we have a schedule of when things need to be replaced and that'll help drive our CIP even better. In terms of future challenges, so funding, we're currently funding this just through user fees. So we're, we're taking, you know, what we have in revenue and we're spreading it out over our O and M budget and we're developing a CIP based on what we have in our, in our funds. We, we do rate increases each year to, to make sure that we're financing properly to maintain this plan. But I think one of the challenges is gonna be rate affordability. I think we need to make sure that we're, we're not outpacing and we're not gonna start harming in terms of affordability of water. And I think that's gonna be a very important thing to, to keep looking at. So looking at different funding opportunities, grant programs, low-interest loans, possibly bonding to maybe spread that cost out over time and make it a little more affordable or maintain affordability, I should say. Emerging contaminants, I'm gonna say the word that nobody wants to hear, PFAS. That is a thing, it will be a thing, it will continue to be a thing. The current regulatory environment is a little fuzzy in terms of what's maybe to come. But PFAS is something that, that we need to pay attention to. And in terms of that facility plan for the water plant, if we're looking at replacement schedule for our, our, our treatment process, we wanna make sure we're thinking about PFAS and what that means in terms of what we would possibly need if we needed to, to address that. We do monitoring programs for PFAS proactively with the Department of Health. We typically have not seen any PFAS or any detectable amount of PFAS, although we did have one well that had a very, 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 very tiny amount. It, it's very likely, or very possible that that could have been just a lab error, but it's something again, that we need to pay attention to. And again, from a regulatory standpoint, there's talk out there that there, there might be a drive to zero, meaning that they don't wanna see any PFAS in the water and that you have to treat it even at small, minute amounts. So it's something that needs to be thought about. And then climate change. Climate change is gonna affect all three of our utilities. Obviously, storm is probably the most evident, but it does affect, for example, our water system. Over the last four years, we had three years of very wet conditions where we actually saw a drop in revenues because nobody needed to water their lawn in the summer. But then last year, now we're talking conservation and we're talking, you know, possible emergency conditions for conservation. So it's, that volatility makes it challenging, again, to manage that funding and making sure that we have adequate revenues to make sure that we're funding our projects. And that wraps up what I had, and I'll open it up to questions.
Alright, does anybody have any additional questions? Alright, Councilmember Troutman.
All right, Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Supple. I um and um I'm sorry, I'm getting in a little late. Um, and just in time to hear the 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 scary but but real concern about uh PFAS. And just wondering, um, w- when you said proactive, I appreciate that you're being proactive. And when you say that the regulatory environment is fuzzy, I acknowledge that is true. Um, are there, can you just share a little bit more about how we are being proactive and what um, if anything, we can do to stay ahead of that curve?
So, yeah, we entered into a program that the Department of Health started and with PFAS monitoring. So they gathered a group of cities that wanted to be in on this program uh to do uh uh regular monitoring of all their wells. Um, so we're in that program and we're getting results uh continuously on 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 uh what we're seeing in our wells, which again, generally speaking, we're not getting any detections. It was just one small occurrence. I think it was back in two thousand nineteen. Um, but since then, we haven't really seen anything.
Are there cities that are not testing?
Uh, well, I think every everybody tests for PFAS. Yeah, everybody tests for PFAS, but there's a there's a core amount of or there's a group of cities that entered into this specific program. Um, and to be honest, I I'm surprised that like more cities aren't in. I think I think they're welcoming everybody. Um, but it's probably, you know, limited maybe by some funding for all the sampling and testing and everything. Um, in terms of like planning ahead and pro and and looking at solutions to this, again, that goes back to that facility planning and making sure that, again, we're not just planning a media replacement, for example, because you know, the the technology of choice right now seems to be granulate granular activated carbon. So maybe we're not just planning a sand media replacement, we're planning a GAC media replacement. Or we're looking at our infrastructure in the water plant and looking at spaces that we could put different treatment processes that can help us with that. And we can, we can plan for that now. We can start costing that now and at least get it programmed and be ready when something happens. Um, the third part to this would be emergency planning. So we just uh or we will be completing um our mandated American Water Infrastructure Act emergency plan. And that includes uh processes and standard operating procedures for emerging contaminants or or a contaminant event. Um, so that's another a way that we prepare uh for something like that.
No, thank you so much. I um, it's in an area where I don't have high competency, but it feels like asbestos or lead paint before, right about the time we're starting to figure out how problematic that was and discovering it's everywhere. And so with it, it, uh, I'm just glad to hear that you're treating it uh seriously and thinking proactively about it. Thank you.
Yeah, I and I think uh in my in my many years of engineering experience in water treatment, um, I fully believe you can treat anything. It's just a matter of being prepared for it and having the technology in place. Um, so, yeah, it's it's a scary subject and nobody wants to talk about it. I don't want to talk about it, but you have to.
I'm really glad you are. Thank you.
So I think that this whole risk management analysis and all of that is a really important thing to do. And so I'm hoping that other departments will do a similar thing. So I think you guys are kind of leading the way. One question I had is I remember there was something about like that we would have an emergency water replacement. Like, can you talk about it? Is it is it through a Dyna or how are we gonna have it if something would go wrong? What's our continuing our our operations?
Uh, yeah, so we have a plan right now for an emergency interconnect with the city of Edina. Um, so we have a feasibility study that was done a couple of years ago that's in place and ready to go. And we actually have it programmed in our CIP. Um, I don't recall the exact year, but it's somewhere twenty-five, twenty-six, somewhere in there. Um, so we have it budgeted. I am hoping that we can, you know, maybe find some funding somewhere from an external source to maybe help drive that a little bit sooner. Um, but we definitely, we have that planned and we have it programmed. Um, we also, again, through our emergency planning, we do have um uh short-term solutions for emergency water interconnects. Um, we actually, we we uh have been talking with fire and we've been coordinating with the fire department to actually put hoses between hydrants between Edina and Richfield. And we can, we can uh get our a a connection to Edina that way as well. Um, so again, that's an emergency uh uh plan, but it's but again, it's something that we can use in the interim until we get that permanent interconnection done.
Thank you, because I think that continuity of operations plan is really, really important. So thank you for doing that.
Absolutely.
Other questions?
All right, thank you. Then, um, did you want to recap anything, City Manager Rodriguez, or?
No, I what I want to do is I want to thank Mike Peterson. I I was told not to embarrass him, but uh Mike's moving on. This is a a bittersweet announcement. He's moving on to a great position in Bloomington and we want to wish you all the luck um in the future, but we thank you for your service here in Richfield and you definitely will be missed. And I don't know, uh, Director Asher wants to add anything.
Thank you very much.
I was told to keep it brief.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'd say something, but I'll probably embarrass myself and start crying, so.
I hear the water's terrible over there.
He'll fix that.
There you go. So our next item has to do with the city's vision and core values. So I'm gonna send it over to City Manager Rodriguez.
Yep, thank you. Um, Communications and Engagement Manager Roland is back with us today um to he has incorporated your feedback into the updated mission, vision and values. And so we're here to look at it again.
Exactly what the city manager said. Um, we're back again. We took uh the feedback that we received from council last time and I feel that we are pretty close. We're like, I feel like we're right there. My wife is a big cross-country and track enthusiast and I feel it's like right there when you're like, we just gotta like lean in and like we'll be crossing hopefully the finish line of our mission, vision and core values today. Um, so I I went back in this process and pretty much reviewed everything that we had. We had our first facilitation, um, where uh the council, as well as city leadership of the director level and conversations with staff set a nice groundwork and foundation, um, kind of what we're looking for, mission and vision and values. Um, then went back to our conversation in September um to tweak everything. I took really good notes. The city manager took really good notes. Just trying to tweak everything or or try to make those changes that you're really looking for. Um, specifically to kind of like Richfield them up was kind of the phrase I've been using. Watch out, we can make T-shirts. Um, but uh then I have, I have such a good support structure here, um, specifically with um our new management analyst, Chris Swanson, and also our Equity and Inclusion uh Manager Blanca Martinez-Gavina. And we sat down and we had one of our famous flash meetings. We were able to try to like kind of come up with just the final um additions based on everything um that we had. And then I sat down with city manager and said, hey, this is what I'm thinking. And she's like, oh, that's pretty good. Maybe try this, though, type thing. So we came together with it. So last time, uh, well, I presented to you a community where all are connected for our vision. Uh, excuse me, our vision state would be a community where all are connected and can access opportunities. Pretty solid. You guys, um, what you pretty much told me, as I said, was we're close, not quite there yet, but very, very close. Um, our more Richfield specifics, um, Councilmember Heyford Eliers, specifically, you said, you know, you liked some of the pieces and components to the Minneapolis vision statement. I still have some issues with the general length of their mission statement and because of it so long, I think it doesn't say necessarily as much, in my opinion, but I understood what you were saying. There were, there are some really great phrases and pieces and terminology in there. And you'll see if you see previously, we kind of lightly borrowed maybe one or two words uh from it to make ours just a little bit stronger. Um, and then also that maybe, you know, the previous one was just a little bit too abstract and I said, I want to try to bring it down to the the level um, just a little bit closer. Um, and then you kind of also pointed out the areas potentially where we could add it. So, um, I changed what we originally did to a resilient, intentional and forward-thinking community where all are connected and can access opportunities. Um, the resiliency, um, I think Councilmember Troutman probably more than anyone can say that's one of the probably the best traits, um, both with our staff and with the community in general. It's a community that's and staff that when faced with a challenge are not one to run away from it, but are really more than likely like our fire department or other first responders or police department run toward it to try to find a solution and try to come up with something. Um, intentional, which we'll discuss just a little bit further in a second, um, has to do a lot with some of the conversations we had last time about, you know, kind of with our equity work that's going on, like, you know, intentionality is very important. And as I said, like, you know, with Richfield, not just outside of the equity piece of things, but also like when we make, when we make decisions here as a staff or as a community or as a elected body, um, we don't, you know, shoot from the hip much, which makes my life as a communication manager much, much easier. So thank you. Um, so that's the thing too is, but we want to be like, you know, think through things that we're doing. And then also be forward-thinking, you know, Richfield is, you know, we're very proud of our past and we're never going to, you know, uh, forget it or anything like that. But I think that Richfield always, its residents, I said, its staff, the council, always has an eye for sure to that horizon, to that future, to see where we're going. So that's why I propose, um, the new vision state potentially be a resilient, intentional and forward-thinking community where all are connected and can access opportunities. And but then I got a, I've got some great feedback from Councilmember uh Wayland, who can't be here tonight. And I'll just read it because it was around this word uh intentional and is it the correct term? And uh, um, I'll read it all just because I don't want to like misquote anything he said, but he said, I really appreciate the efforts uh to get uh this right in regards to vision, mission and values. I think the values are are especially and totally right and capture what guides us as a city. The mission statement too is very good now with the minor edits from last time. For the vision, I think it's improved, but wonder if intentional is too vague of an adjective uh or too similar to forward-thinking. I'd love to capture the commitment of Richfield staff and residents have to the community and passion for being the best we can be. I wonder if dedicated or a synonym to that would capture the idea or say uh more than intentional. So hold on to that um just for one second. Um, and this is just, I said, a little bit more explanation of intentional. And if you have questions of it in regards to equity, our equity manager is here as well. But we usually take a stance of what's called intentional inclusion with the equity and inclusion work that we're currently doing. And at least intentional in regards to how we usually refer to it internally is one deliberately and with calculated purpose uses the appropriate skills to learn uh what they do not know, even if they think they do. Uh, a culture of intentional inclusion is one that is open, flexible and agreeable to other ways of dealing with organizational and life issues. So we got to talking and uh our management analyst uh brought up the idea of maybe the word purposeful. Um, you know, it's it's a lot like, it's a lot like intentional. Um, it gets a lot, it maybe gets a little bit more passion in there or something along the lines of what Councilmember Wayland was potentially saying and just the definition of purposeful. Um, having or showing, you know, determination resolved, maybe once again going to um that resiliency piece. And then the last one, um, as a potential option is deliberate, um, because we're kind of running down the synonym train right now, um, which is engage in long careful consideration. So all of them work. Um, but uh I guess at this point, I'll go back real quick and say um, kind of based on the feedback that you have, based on what I presented, how do you feel we stand right now in regards to the proposed vision statement as proposed?
So do people have comments at this point? All right, Councilmember Troutman.
Well, first, thank, thank you, um, Neil, for for always being our wordsmith or in lots of context and in and uh representing our 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 hearts and intentions. I I think I feel comfortable with all this. My one, um, and I'm I'm searching for the right adjective um, because I would support this, but the one thing that still feels missing is articulating a vision of prosperity in the city and resiliency flirts with prosperity or thriving or flourishing, but is, I think of it kind of in the negative, like coming back from a uh a problem or responding to a crisis, which is good, but something that articulates that, maybe I'm missing it, but I I and if I'm recalling my feedback last time, I think that's probably the one thing that if I that I'd have to contribute to the statement.
For sure. And in the, I know this, we're not talking core values, but we did throw the thriving into core values for sure. Um, do you believe that you can kind of get that? Like, because we can add prosperity, but at least for the vision, can you maybe see that is in regards to can access opportunities? Because like I could, at least for me, I could see, you know, really if we're talking adjectives, you know, can access opportunities, can access prosperity? Like I'm saying, like, I I see them kind of in the same vein myself, but I could easily be wrong. I've been reading these for months on end, so. Open to any suggestions.
My my suggest, maybe if we said are connected and can flourish would be less words and more than than just accessing an opportunity, but maybe maybe not. Um, also, it's it's like a direct thought, but it's not something that I would want to hold up this process either. I think this reflects good work. So I sh- I share that. I submit it to to my colleagues. Um, and am very happy to support whatever the consensus is on this uh on the statement.
So I have a question. Is this more for internal usage or external usage? Because that would make a difference on how I would answer the question.
Vision, mission and values where people do externally like like to know what a organization's mission, vision, values are, but it is primarily a more internal focusing, uh, you know, aspirational uh creed or code, I guess, essentially.
So if it's more internal than external, then I think intentional is fine. I think an external audience would know what you were talking about. Internally, it expresses what we want. And I do agree, I like the word flourishing, whether you stick it in in the list of the adjectives at the beginning or add at the end. I think flourish is a great word.
Sounds good. Um, I'm really happy with this change. I think I think you did a really good job integrating our feedback and it does feel more Richfield-specific. And like I could, well, not right on the spot, but with a little bit of thought, I could very easily explain why like this represents Richfield to me. So I like that. Um, I don't feel super strongly. I do like the term like vision of prosperity, but I don't know how to integrate it. So I don't really feel super strongly.
Are you fine with potentially uh changing uh can access opportunities to can flourish?
For some reason, I like prosperous better, but if you put it in there, it sounds weird. It sounds like you're expecting people to be rich or something. I don't know. It's just like a weird effect when you put it, throw it in there. So I think we're all, all are connected and can flourish. Seems seems fine to me, yeah.
Uh, Mayor Protem.
Go ahead.
Um, we do hope to use this with recruitment material. So there is an external focus. It'll be on our website. Um, and uh, I I I'm just throwing it out there and um and can thrive, thrive is another word. And I do, um, I do want to bring back up Councilmember Wayland's suggestion is dedicated um instead of intentional.
I would prefer.
Started the conversation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would prefer purposeful over dedicated. I think dedicated is also kind of unclear. Whereas if you say purposeful, everybody knows what you mean.
Yeah, and dedicated is becoming one of those more industrial jargon words that I could list several other or that would I would argue would maybe potentially muddy the definition if you had to ask me.
I, in in support of that, um, intentional community is also like a term of art in talking about like communes and people that choose to live together in intentional community, which is not I don't, I I and not not the intention, but I've heard that phrase used to to mean not a city necessarily, which would mean like purposeful or dedicated. I I'd feel comfortable with um with with either.
That's funny. I went to a really crunchy high school and they talked about intentional communities a lot and I was thinking about that, but I'm like, nobody has that association with me. That's fine. Um, yeah, I think I think purposeful is fine. It doesn't feel like a super commonly used word, but it does convey the message that you want. So I'm happy with that.
All right. Well, I think I have the information that I need. Um, for that, uh, the next part of this should go relatively quickly. Um, so previously, the mission statement was to create infrastructure and provide services to make lives better. Um, and the feedback that I got that we're even closer on mission than we were vision, which was good. Um, I the, one of the big takeaways was um adding systems because where we all know that infrastructure is a much larger word than streets and uh water and a lot of the things you just heard about. But, you know, once again, then we're talking like wonky city jargon essentially, which we want this to be understood by people that work in different departments and um can easily access and understand what we stand for. Um, and then just some other um um other aspects of it as well, so. Um, and so I changed it um to create equitable systems, infrastructure and services to make our community better as a mission, uh, which I think incorporates um, actually every single piece of feedback that I think I got last time. So, um, obviously, we added Equrel, we added Systems and um we also added Services, but that wasn't part of it. I just kind of like, I like a three combo plate myself for for, you know, lists of things. So, um, how do we feel about the proposed mission statement in regards to the feedback that I received from last time?
Any comments?
Looks fine. I was just curious. When you read it, you said to make our community better. Was that deliberate or was that a question you had or just like?
Oh, no, I think it just.
Okay, but you, you, that is your, is what you're proposing, right? Okay. And I don't, I don't really care. I was just curious. It has a slightly different effect of like, those are the means to it or they themselves are like the result that makes the community better. But anyway, whatever, it, it looks great to me.
Yeah, I'm thinking this is wonderful and I'm seeing two thumbs up from our other council member. Thank you.
Excellent. Uh, and then the core values, this was once again all procedural, but there were some really good additions. Um, I wish that council member Wayland was here because I really liked his change under equitable, where we originally said, oh, we want to understand, understand the barriers or we want to identify them originally. And he's like, well, and that makes total sense. It's like, well, you can identify them, but like you need to understand them to like, make sure like similar barriers don't happen again, things of that nature. Added the word thriving in, um, because we were, um, under, uh, equitable as well. And then changed the, uh, you know, citizen to resident and added that big, uh, pride, celebrate tailored piece uh, to our community-centered as well. I gotta be honest, I almost ran out of space on that one, but we got it in there. So I can just, I'll just read them out. Um, and if you guys have any other comments or want any other changes made, just let me know. But, uh, for, did I just jump on your spot, yours part, by the way? Okay, good enough. Um, but anyway, so for community-centered, the city of Richfield celebrates and takes pride in its community. The city is resident-focused and makes tailored decisions based on what is best for current and future residents. Richfield is constantly seeking opportunities to collaborate with residents and set goals and accomplish objectives. And in equitable, the city of Richfield is dedicated to building a diverse, inclusive and thriving hometown. The city seeks to understand barriers and connects all residents with opportunities. Richfield will reduce inequity by focusing on the areas of greatest disparities. Thoughts?
It looks great. Any other?
Councilmember Troutman, you get to go.
So thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Appreciate everyone. I know this was a long process, but I'll make those, uh, changes to the vision and we will be.
Just to clarify, did we decide to go with thrive at the end? Was that the consensus?
Yep.
Okay, good. I like that. All right.
Thrive and we'll change intentional to purposeful.
Okay.
And then we'll be done, done.
All right. Do we have anything else we need before we adjourn? All right. So it is six forty and we are adjourning. Thank you all.